Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City West Bend Licensing Board to order for January 23rd. Note that we do have a quorum and we have two items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, licensing board regular meeting minutes from January 9th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So, motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All is in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And under agenda items for consideration, we have original Class A combination license for Wingate Mart Inc. at 2825 East Washington.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So, motion second. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All is in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourn by the call of the Chair.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. I have three items on the agenda. Item number one would be approval of minutes from the meeting of December 19th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, terminate existing and approve new storm water management practices, maintenance agreement, 208-210 North River Road, PUD. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. So, this first item, the two items I have actually for tonight are similar. So, this first item is for development at 208-210 North River Road. As usual, when we have new development, if we issue a storm water management permit, we develop some agreements with the property owners to make sure that they will maintain the storm water management facilities in the future, so they keep functioning as intended. So, we did that. We issued the permit. We had an agreement in place. And then, at some point, the developer wanted to make a change to their development. And so, we had to make a change to the storm water management permit at that point. And so, a new agreement has been drafted to account for those changes. And so, what we want to do is cancel the previous agreement and establish this new agreement for those storm water management facilities.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Max? There are no questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, terminate existing and approve new storm water management practice maintenance agreement, family promise.
Thank you again. So, like I announced, this is similar to the previous item. And this time is for the development for family promise. And basically, the same scenario where we did have an approved storm water management permit with the associated agreement, some changes are being made to the property. And so, a new development was, a new agreement was developed with the upgrade to the permit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? There are no questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
No further business before the Board of Public Works adjourn.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for January 23, 2023. We got two items on the agenda tonight, first of which being the approval of the minutes. Finance Committee regular meeting, January 9th, 2023, 6:25 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda is the Fire Department accepting donations from Strakota Trust for Smoke Alarm Program, and that would be, gee, who'd act, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. We have a generous donation that we're requesting approval to accept from Suzanne Strakota and the Strakota Foundation, a $500 donation, that same as she donated last year. It's very much appreciated and will be put in our free smoke detector program so that we can continue that program next year and beyond.
Motion to approve with the thanks to the Council.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
With no more business before the Finance Committee adjourn by the call of the Chair.
And good evening once again. Like to call to order the City West Bend Common Council meeting for January 23rd. Note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, note that we have 14 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the Common Council regular meeting minutes from January 9th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none. All is in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have a list of presentations, the first being the 2023 State of the City Address. Members of the Common Council Administration, Department Heads, along with the many business owners, residents, and visitors of West Bend, I am honored to be able to deliver my State of the City address for the final time as your mayor. A few weeks ago, I had a great conversation with Sheila Crepkey. She's the owner of Urban Farm Girl and Urban Loft in our historic downtown. And it is historic since we received that official designation, by the way. She had reflected on the growth of our downtown, the various events that were occurring, Main Street Reconstruction, and the new businesses opening all around her. And she was excited. The draw of our downtown was infectious. Events were bringing in new visitors. She knew Main Street Reconstruction was needed for the long-term development of our city. And even with increased competition with new boutiques and shops coming in, she said, "Bring it on." Her reflections highlight the progress that we've been making as a city over the past few years. And this past year's progress is what I would like to share with you tonight. First, as always, we are thankful to live in a safe and secure community. Year after year, police, fire, and EMS services continues to be our largest budgeted expense, and for good reason. Our primary responsibility as a municipal government is to serve and protect all who enter our city. Continuation of service, a mantra used by our Fire Department, is key to make sure all who've been in our care reach a stable and safe condition whenever possible. To this end, police responded to 64,405 policing activities and fire and EMS 5,400 calls throughout 2022, and completed a combined 9,000-plus hours of total training, proving that our growing city continues to utilize our resources. Our Police Department has increased communication involvement in our community. Now, when a police officer is cited, it may not just be because someone is violating the law, but because they're checking in, answering questions, or maybe just greeting somebody with a smile. Building this rapport from youth on up helps to establish a level of trust and respect that when you are in need, the men and women in blue are here to help. See something, say something, is our police chief's mantra. And this takes on a new meaning when the understanding of the civil contract we make is that policing is a two-way streak, and we, as a community, can lead this effort together. Despite some ups and downs with funding sources, our city was united in supporting additional firefighter and EMS professionals for our Fire Department, adding nine new members, the first increase in over 20 years. We recognize that our city has grown much over this time, and increased calls were persistent. And we concluded that the time to right-size our department was now, and pleased to welcome these new individuals onto the team. I'd like to take a moment to thank these men and women who serve in our police, fire, EMS, and dispatch departments for their service to the City of West Bend, so please join me for a round of applause. This past year, we continue to make progress on updating our infrastructure. Eighteenth Avenue, Laurel Drive North, Pennsylvania, and Fifth Avenue were addressed in addition to crack filling, ceiling, and collaboration with utilities. A total of 3.5 million was spent in 2022. In 2023, we continue our commitment to strong infrastructure, spending $3 million to tackle roads such as Laurel Drive South, Rusko Drive, and Water Street with a mix of carefully allocated tax dollars, grant money, and ARPA funds. Also set for this year is Downtown Main Street Reconstruction, a large project that, while burdensome for a short time, will result in not only a smooth drive, but increased parking and public accessibility as well. Our Public Works staff and their partners continue to be busy implementing this progress, and for this, they deserve a round of applause as well. Strong economic growth has continued to progress. The District Town Homes and 1840 Brewery is standing tall at the corner of Washington and North Main, ready to bring new residents to our city this year and to shop our downtown. Tiff District Number 16 was just approved, bringing in a mix of senior housing and commercial development to another underutilized area of our city. These projects estimate $52 million of assessed value in the new Tax Incremental Financing District. These districts are the tools by which we not only improve those key areas, but better those around them. Continued implementation of Main Street grants, facade improvement grants, and increased tourism dollars are all helping to expand this work. We celebrated Milwaukee Tool opening in the West Bend Manufacturing Center with a 95,000-square-foot facility, bringing in 100-plus new jobs. The old Shopko Building has been remodeled, bringing in Five Below, Home Goods, Sierra, and Big Lots. And Old Navy and Dunham Sports have moved into the Boston Store redevelopment. Small and commercial businesses continue to thrive with new or expanded spaces. Lobby Bricks, Copper River, Barton House, Urban Loft, Good Day Cafe, Gary's Place, Restore, KK So &amp; Vac, Milwaukee Power, Ray S. Radiology, Beat Goes On Records, and more, and Stingers Golf &amp; Rec, along with many more, have all made an impact in our great city. Our Economic Development Team, Engineering, and Planning Departments are busy, and we certainly want this to continue. For this progress, let us recognize them as well. Amazing progress has been made to highlight the natural and cultural recreations that are in our city. Our community came together to support the completion of the new Regner Park Beach House, a meeting and gathering place set in our beautiful park system and to utilize with the upcoming swim season as well. Speaking of which, lifeguards are being trained and ready to serve us this summer. The west side of the River Walk is near completion, as work continues to move ahead, finally connected to the north via an underpass underneath Washington Ave. And next up is Moving Forward with the All Abilities Playground, a parent-driven and community-led effort to create a place, space, for all children, to be another attraction to bring residents and visitors alike into our great city. Many partnerships, grants, and donations are utilized to make these dreams become a reality. For this cooperation amongst our community and city staff, let's give them one more round of applause. Now, with all this progress, we certainly have challenges ahead. Our Fire Department analysis has pushed us to begin conversations on new station placements and response times to best serve our community and those around us. Downtown Main Street Reconstruction is a concern for many business owners who are determined to stay afloat throughout. And the West Bend Manufacturing Center has a great anchor tenant with Milwaukee Tool, but more development needs to occur to keep that area solvent. However, in the end, as always, I am optimistic, and I hope you are too. Our residents all want the same thing, to live their lives without having to worry or think about the policy or budgetary decisions of their local government. They want garbage to get picked up, emergency services to come when called upon, and new shops and activities to enjoy. Our job is to ensure these services are provided for the best value of their hard-earned tax dollars and celebrate these wins and progress that we make day in and day out. I'll end this talk the same way that I have every year, as its message still rings true. The state of our city is strong. We are blessed with the economic fortitude to persevere. We have invested in and strongly support our Public Safety Divisions and the rule of law, and we continue to provide economic and recreational wins that encourage people to want to live, work, and play in our great city. I know I am honored to have been mayor of such a city, and we, as a council, should be proud of our community and the work we get to do day in and day out. Thank you for your time, and thank you to all who serve in the great city of West Bend. Thank you so much. And I know you all aren't here just to hear me. I will proceed to Items Two, Three, and Four, which are the Oath of Office for our firefighter paramedic Trevor Potke, firefighter paramedic Jacob Bowden, and firefighter EMT Ryan Wagner. And I'll let our chief and his team take it from here.
Good evening. Our first individual that gets sworn in tonight is Trevor Potke. Trevor graduated from the Slinger Fire Department. He received his paramedic firefighter training. He's taken numerous certifications. He worked full-time for the Fort Washington Fire Department and also the Richfield Fire Department. We stole him from the Richfield Fire Department and did not give him back. Sorry, Chief. We're excited to have him. Mayor, these are the first of the three, or first of the nine that we talked about. We're excited with these three individuals, high-class, high-quality individuals that are going to make our program, so we're excited to have all of those tonight. Trevor's badge after his swearing-in is going to be pinned by his wife, Kayla, and me.
Just gonna have you step. There's the mic right here. You can face the audience. Yep, just raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Trevor Potke.
I, Trevor Potke.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter, paramedic.
As firefighter, paramedic.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I'm just gonna have you sign.
My next firefighter is Jacob Bowden. Jacob comes to us from the graduate Greenfield High School. He also received his firefighter paramedic training at Wachshau Fire. He comes to us from the city of Self-Wide Fire Department. He is the first to come to us via lateral transfer, so we're excited for that. I did tell him lateral transfer only works one way, so we don't use lateral transfer, but we're happy to have him. We're excited. He's a paramedic, a good-quality individual as well. He completed his training last week and has started on shift this week, so we're excited to have him. After he gets sworn in, his fiancee, Brandy, will be pinning his badge.
Have you stepped to the mic?
Stand right next to him.
And have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jacob Bowden.
I, Jacob Bowden.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter, paramedic.
As firefighter, paramedic.
In the city of West Bend.
City of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
I'm faithful.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, Brandy Finn's badge, and I forgot to mention that he did serve in the military in 2012 to 2018, and was deployed twice to Afghanistan.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard and thank you for your service.
And our third new firefighter today is Ryan Wagner. Ryan comes to us from Sheboygan. He received his firefighter, paramedic, and paramedic training at Lake Shore Tech College. He comes to us from Plymouth Fire Department, where he received the rank of active lieutenant. He comes to us with over 10 years of firefighting experience, so we're excited to have him. Tonight, after his point, or after his swearing-in, he will be pinned by his wife, Debra.
Just gonna have you step to the mic. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Ryan Wagner.
I, Ryan Wagner.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter, EMT.
As firefighter, EMT.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, congrats to our new team members, but we're not done celebrating quite yet. We have a resolution honoring Fire Lieutenant, Paramedic James Geldner for 25 years of service. If I can have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Allen and Model. All is in favor of this recognition? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this resolution so reads, "Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas James Geldner began his service with the West Bend Fire Department in January 1998 as a firefighter, in June 2010, he became a paramedic, was promoted to a motor pump operator slash paramedic in December 2018, and then promoted to lieutenant, paramedic in March 2021. Whereas during his career as a firefighter, he has obtained certification as a firefighter I, driver, operator, aerial, and pumper, fire officer I, and fire officer II. He leads by example with always having a hard-work attitude and willing to take on any job. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Fire Lieutenant, Paramedic James Geldner and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal and dedicated service." Let's give him a round of applause.
Chief said I should say something.
Yeah, any wise words for us?
So, I guess I will. I came to West Bend in 98 and left my home to be here. Now, it's home, so this has been now been 25 years here, so I do love living in West Bend. I encourage all these guys to have a good 25, 30-year career, so thank you, and it's been a pleasure to, I don't know, I coached football for 15 years in this city. I enjoy being a part of this city, so I thank all of you who put your time and be a part of it. It's a team effort, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Nice job, Goldie. If you ever gave somebody permission to just go up there and speak whatever they want to say, when you said, "What should I say?", I said, "Whatever you want," and after those words left my mouth, I'm like, "Uh-oh." But, well done. Another great character kind of guy, coached football a lot of years around here. He's a local, now he's a local kid, we call him, but has done anything we've asked of him on the Fire Department. He's a mentor to the younger firefighters. He leads by example. We couldn't be more proud of having him on our department, and we're thankful for him, so good job, Goldie.
Thank you so much again. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. We do just have a brief few more items on our agenda, so you're welcome to stay. Otherwise, if you'd like to head out, thank you so much for coming out tonight. And I'll move on to our consent agenda consisting of items six through nine. If we could have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Kayla and Allen. All is in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration, number 10, a resolution to join AARP, Network of Age-Friendly Communities. And we're gonna have a brief, nope, yep, okay, a brief presentation by Jacob. Welcome, Jacob. I think this is your first time up at the dais here talking to us. No pressure.
Hello. Good evening. So, yes, as we see on the agenda, over the past couple of weeks, the Communications Department has been working on filling out an application to join the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. It is both a recognition of our current efforts to support people into their, citizens of all ages, especially into their retirement years, but also a commitment to continue to support people as they move into their retirement. So, that involves continuing to provide public spaces that are accessible to all people regardless of age, and as well as providing the services and other community assets that we already provide in this community. So, with this application, we'll be available to receive additional insight from communities that have gone ahead of us in terms of the great work that they've been doing there, as well as receive potential eligibility for funding to support those efforts.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Jacob? Otherwise, I look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Give that to Model and Dolnick. All is in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good job. And number 11, resolution for Vibrant Spaces Grant Application Pilot Program within Community Development Grant CDI Program, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. Jess?
Sure. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on the resolution, but essentially, this is a grant application that is being created and submitted by the end of the month for the walkway that's in between the Historic Theater and Husar's House of Fine Diamonds, so that's where it's located.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Kayla. All is in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Jess.
Thanks.
And moving on to reports. First is a report by Alderman Berquist regarding the Library Board meeting, and he told us it was gonna be, how long, four minutes? Are we gonna hold you to that?
Four minutes. Sure. Start the clock. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on January 17th. After the Pledge of Allegiance, we approved the consent agenda consisting of minutes of our last meeting, which was November 15th, and the expenditures for November and December of 2022. Financial reports were given, which included recognition of a donation from Marilyn and Keith Roush. Thank you very much for that. Library Director Steve Theory provided a written report that was discussed at length. Items of interest included a proposed bill in the legislature right now, LRB 1095/1, which is, deals with pupil or minor access to harmful material in public libraries and public schools. This is similar to legislation introduced last year but had no action taken. With the new session of the legislature, the bill is again being presented for consideration. Representatives of the Wisconsin Library Association, of which we are a member, are monitoring the legislation and may have additional information for release at the Library Legislative Day, which is February 7th. Steve reported total physical circulations for 2022 was down, 1,417 circulations, but despite this, the West Bend library still is the highest circulation in the system with over 404,000 physical circulation, or physical items for circulation. West Bend is also the highest circulating library of overdrive content with over 75,000 total overdrive digital circulations. This is almost 4,000 circulations over the Mead Library in Sheboygan, which is the largest library in the system, which we're often compared with. Visits to the library increased 18% in 2021. Cardholders have dropped over 12,000 due to a purge of patrons that occurred last year. This is a natural occurring thing. It's not something that just happened. It occurs when cardholders have not used their library cards in over three years or have fines of less than $5. On a positive note, new cardholders went up 1,400 in 2021 and 2,300